I'd like to call this April 4th, regular council meeting and work session to order. And let's stand for, everybody is standing for a moment of silence. And let's remember the Cramp family. It was a tragic tragedy the other day. And also, let's remember Buster Spadacino, who passed away this week and put over 50 years into Little League and molding the future of our younger generation.
And Mr. Wallach, please, Bill Wallach, yes.
There's one more had to come out.
Just in case.
Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dillon, you want to do a roll call, please?
Mr. Pezzin, here. Ms. Pohlman.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Pezzin is absent. Ms. Figaro.
Here.
Mr. Johnson, here. Mr. DeCroche, here. Mr. D'Jesepe, here.
Okay, we're going to open up the meeting to public participation. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, state your name and address. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? That ends public participation. All right, Mr. Pezz, you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, a brief one. I was going to say, I haven't been here for a long time. So I would like to accumulate my five minutes from each meeting all in one night. Keep you guys here till midnight. I'm accompanied by Alan Hermely, who is one of our board members for Raising the Bar. Alan is also a board member at Silver Lake Nature Center. He's fully immersed in our community and we're very pleased to have him. I'm here to, by the way, before I begin, Harry Crowe, of course, we know is the stepfather of the family that was deceased as a train. And I just want everybody to remember that Harry, you don't have to remember him, we all know. But for Raising the Bar's purposes, he was a volunteer driver for our River Runner. He helped hang the flowers on the light poles on Mill Street. He watered the flowers. He went to every cleanup we ever had. I hope Maria can recruit him, although maybe not this year. He's just an all-around, just a great booster of Bristol Borough. And I want to make sure that I said that.
He also worked on the rescue squad, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Of whatever, the fire department, everything. He really acted.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I'm here to talk to you about the Lincoln Project that we have proposed. We have met with the Borough a couple of times. We've met with Ralph, we've met with Mr. Dillon, pardon me, and Kevin Everett. And really, I'm here to let the public know what we intend to do, what we hope to do soon. So first of all, we're calling it the Abraham Lincoln Visit February 21st, 1861 Commemorative Project. Prior to, I guess, Harry Truman, Greg, I don't know, the swearing-in date for new presidents was March 4th. So back then in 1861, Abraham Lincoln was on his way to his swearing-in in Washington DC. On February 21st, 1861, he stopped in Bristol Borough. And there is a map of the route he took from Springfield, Illinois to Bristol, oh, excuse me, to Washington DC. He made 93 stops along the way. It was a 1,900-mile journey. It took several days. He wanted to swing by, obviously, it's a pretty circuitous route. He wanted to swing through Illinois, Indiana, Ohio. He went up into New York. He came down through Massachusetts and Connecticut, back to New York. And anyway, eventually ending up in Washington. But the 83rd stop was right here in Bristol Borough. And it was the only place in Bucks County where he stopped. The previous stop was in Trenton and the subsequent stop was at Kensington in Philadelphia. Other than that, he could have blown through, but he stopped here in Bristol Borough. And as the PHMC marker reads, pardon me, there was a crowd of 1,000 people gathered to see him. You can imagine the tension. By the time he made this trip, before he's even sworn in, the southern states said, if Abraham Lincoln wins, we're going to leave the Union. And before he even made this trip, seven states have left the Union. So you can imagine the tension that was in the air and what he was anticipating. What's going to happen when I get to Washington? And I have to deal with a nation that is divided and other states had promised to leave as well. Pardon me, what happened was when the southern, when the deep south states left, like Mississippi, Georgia, Alabama, the upper south states felt they had no choice but to leave or else they'd be isolated in a smaller number. So they left as well. So that's why we're doing this. Sadly, I'll just say now, for his funeral train, four years later, they retraced the route. They went back from Washington DC to Springfield, Illinois, basically in the same route they took to get here. So there's a picture of, in the, I think it was 1992, at least it was 35 years ago, 30 or 35 years ago. The council at the time saw the wisdom. We were in a rails-to-trails program. We were removing the rail track that ran right through town. I'm not talking about the High Line. I'm talking about the track that ran right down along, parallel to Pond Street. And a rails-to-trails program where you have your jogging paths, bicycle path now, allowed us to remove that track. And the council at the time saw the wisdom in at least preserving some piece of the track where it was believed that Lincoln had stopped. And that's the venue Historic and Museum Commission. So we're not making this up. These are real people and Harris Brothers spent a lot of time with research and whatnot. PHMC erected a plaque and you see it there. And the picture on the left shows the expanse. There's about 75 feet of track that remains. So we decided that this was historically significant enough that we wanted to do something more. The Borough has maintained it in terms of cutting the grass and keeping it clean. And I don't know, Jim, whether the school board or the Borough installed that fence behind, but there's a nice fence that's behind it that's going to stay as far as we're concerned. So what are we doing? What's the rationale? The rationale is we value historic preservation and we think this is something that should be preserved. We want to promote tourism. We have a heritage trail that runs through town at all the different sites. And this would be added to it. And finally, just for community pride, to let the people of this town know, those who don't know, because I found that a lot of people don't know that Lincoln stopped there. So what are we going to do? This is our, this is our plan. Now, historically, Lincoln, the train stopped and has met many of those, many of those stops, he stopped and got off overnight and stayed. But most of the time, he would stop and speak from the back railing of the train. And when we met with the Borough and we tried, our original goal was to recreate that image. And we found that it's just impossible. And then somebody said, well, why don't we just bring a real train car here? There's plenty of train cars around. And yeah, it's not a problem, just pick it up on the way home from school. And also, we thought it would be an attractive nuisance for kids. It's right there at the school and we feared that a train car like that would not be good. So what we decided to do instead, and I checked with two historians that I respect a great deal, Harold Michener from the Borough and Carl LeVoe, who knows more about Bucks County than anyone. And we talked about it and they said, no, just lean into it. Tell them, you know, in real life, it was a train. But in your artist conception, it's going to be a train platform. And we felt good about that. So what you see here is a combination of those silhouettes you see are going to be steel, three-eighths inch steel welded to steel plates that you won't see, that will be affixed to sonotubes underground. Those babies weigh a couple hundred pounds each, if not more. And they will form the silhouette of the images. Those people will represent the thousand people, symbolize the thousand people who were there that night. And in addition, Lincoln will be standing on the platform with his hat off because he's six foot six as it was, with the hat, it would just be too tall. So he'll be standing on the platform and that will be the image. Let me go on. So these are going to be full-size, life-size figures. We want people visiting, if you've ever been to, I guess it's the Constitution Center, where you can walk among, maybe it's in Tizzy Road. There's a place where you can walk among designers of the Constitution and they're life-size figures. That's the concept we were looking for here, okay? So we wanted to do something artistic, but not the standard old just painting. So we thought this would be pretty cool. Also, to the right, you'll see two pedestals there, similar to the ones we put at Riverport Plaza at Market. And they will tell the story that I'm telling you now. And as a matter of fact, let me show you. That's what one of them will look like, okay? And I don't expect you to read that. But that's going to tell the story, just like our other placards do, of what happened that day and the significance of it. And as it says at the bottom there, this is going to cost some money. And thanks to Tina Davis, our outstanding state representative, who has provided some state grant money for this. We don't know what the final cost will be. If it exceeds what we get from the state, we're going to be raising money. And we're usually pretty successful now. One of the reasons to be here tonight is to let the public know if this is the kind of thing you like. I don't know, maybe we'll sell another brick or we'll do something. But at the very least, we'll put up a placard indicating the donors. So that's going to happen. This is interesting. And Alan did most of the, most of the work on this. At the time Lincoln came to town, Kansas had just been admitted as the 34th state. However, just a little piece of trivia for the understand, it doesn't look like our flag, does it? The protocol is that whenever a new state is admitted to the Union, whenever a new state is admitted to the Union, the flag doesn't change until the 4th of July of that year. So when Lincoln came through in February, it was still a 33-state flag, when in fact, we had 34 states because Kansas had just been admitted. Okay, let me see if there's something else here. We feel very strongly that we want this project to look just as good, if not better, at night than it does during the day. So we have a meeting tomorrow night with a lighting specialist from an engineering firm. And we're going to do these studies that they do where you can actually do projections and you can see what this light would look like as opposed to that light and so on. But we want that thing to look really good at night. And of course, the most illuminated part of that is going to be on top of Lincoln. It's going to be shining down on Lincoln. Alan, would you like to say just a couple of words?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alan Hermely. I'm a new board member. I joined the board because of what the board does for this community. And I was thoroughly impressed for the short time I've been here. I've only been here for a couple of years. And this project is just indicative of one of those many projects that I've witnessed here in town. You know, this is more, just more than a public art. It's an opportunity to preserve the local history, promote civic pride, and boost cultural tourism. I would really invite everybody here in Bristol to support this initiative and help bring Lincoln's legacy to life for future generations. I think this will be very iconic piece of art for many generations. So I hope, I hope everybody sees it the same way I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and I'm sure they will. Just so last thing, we're not just going to finish this project and walk away from it. We want to, we want to have a really impressive dedication ceremony. So we're going to, we're going to have a Lincoln reenactor. We have some Lincoln, we have some Civil War era people who will come dressed that way as well. The school's right behind it and we're going to work with the schoolchildren and the administration at the school to see how we can incorporate them into this. Also, I forgot to say, on those placards, there are going to be QR codes. So it's going to be interactive. So you could walk up to the placard, click on the QR code, you'll be hearing Abraham Lincoln giving a speech. And we're going to decide which three or four speeches you put there. So that's it. We're excited about it. I think, I'd like to think that with the project we did at Wood and Market Street, that we proved ourselves and we could do a pretty good job when we set our minds to it, especially if somebody like Lou lends you his wall, that always comes in handy. But we're, we're pleased with that and I think we're going to be even more pleased with this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We still have some things to work out, but that's it.
Just so you know, council's here, whatever you need.
Thank you so much.
You know that.
You always have been. And we appreciate that.
When US Main will start.
Pardon me?
When US Main.
Tomorrow.
He will start tonight.
What time do you get dark tonight? I'd like to get things darkened.
Bill, while you're up there,
Yeah.
Someone gave me this idea today and I want to pass it on to you because it refers to putting a mural on the moose on the side of the building there.
That faces Green Lake.
Right. And I don't think we have anything down there, so can you put that in your, if possible?
It's been recommended, and it's varying ideas. There used to be a car ship.
Yeah.
So you could be looking into a car showroom. There's some ideas, yeah.
Just, just an idea someone gave me. And I told them I would pass it on if I saw you. Here you are.
Thank you. Listen, I'm going to say, I've been coming up here a long time. I served in your chair, Ralph, for years. And some good friends of mine served in it after. There has simply never been a time when we have had more harmony in this room and more harmony between the people in the room and the people out on the street. And that's what makes projects like this go. I had someone call me yesterday from Philadelphia Magazine. He's doing a story on suburban getaways, places to go in suburban areas. And he had pitched the idea a couple of years ago about Bristol. And the editors didn't want to hear it. He pitched it this time and he said, let's do something. So if we're being, that doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen just by the nonprofit groups doing what we do. And it doesn't happen with you just doing what you do. It happens by people working together. And we just haven't had more harmony than we have right now. And I'm very happy about that. So thanks for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to leave. Although I don't think you're going to be much behind us, right? Looks like a short meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else, Paul? That's it, all of participation. Tyre, what do you have?
I have a couple of things. So I want to start the meeting by reiterating what yourself and Councilwoman Rodriguez said. You know, we want to remember the Buster, Buster Spadacino's family. Buster was a legend for those of you that played Little League and been down on the field. I know him and my father coached down there, you know, 50 years ago. Whenever he went to opening day or if you just were playing softball or baseball, you know, Buster was there for many generations. He was a very influential person in the lives of the boys and girls in this town. And he's going to be severely missed. Thankfully, for this community, you know, he passed that kind of legacy on to his children or who are still carrying the torch forward with Little League. So please keep them in your, in your prayers and remember the Spadacino family. I also want to, you know, mention two other people. The O'Donnell family, Ginny works in our tax office for many years with Anna Bono Larracy. She's going to be severely missed. She was an asset to the community. And Mr. Wallach, there's not a person who ever met Mr. Wallach who wouldn't say he was one of the nicest guys. And no one ever had a bad word to say about that guy. Please keep his family in your prayers as well. You know, while we're on remembrances, we all know about the tragic incident that happened down on our High Lines just a few weeks ago. The Cramp family was devastated by what happened. And anyone that met Chris knows, you know, when you talk about assets, not just to Bristol Borough, but to the county and the surrounding counties, this guy had a reach that no one could imagine. And you didn't know about it because he just kept it to himself until this tragic incident. But I travel all over the place for work, you know, Delaware, Maryland, all around Bucks County and other counties around the Philadelphia area. And they all unfortunately knew about what happened in Bristol. But many of them also just had some kind of contact or knew about what Chris did. So please keep the Cramp family, you know, in your prayers. And, you know, we, me, being 49 years old, I've never experienced such a mass tragedy like this in our community. So this is going to be one that's going to be, you know, hard to recover from for a long time. I just want to mention a couple of things we've been doing in town. We have the Drug Take Back Day, April 26th. That's happening right here in Barrel Hall from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it's also happening at Grundy Towers from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the lobby. This is for any old or unused medication. Please bring it in, have it properly disposed. And let's keep the kids and other family members safe by getting it out of our cabinets or, you know, off the countertops. I want to thank our chief and the rest of our police department for the truck detail we did in March. We had a truck detail on Beaver Street. We had 40 tractor trailer stops during that time, issuing 13 citations. We also had a meeting with Utopia. We increased signage. And as you can see from the agenda tonight, we are passing a truck, new truck ordinance in town. We are determined to fix the truck problem. And I think we're making strides in making that happen. So thanks to the chief and the rest of the officers for that truck detail that happened through the month of March. And we're going to keep plowing forward until this is finally resolved. I want to welcome our new part-time police officer who's being voted on today, Ryan Frank, graduate of Temple Academy in 2022 and three years of police experience in Bucks County. Definitely going to be an asset to our force. Sunday Stroll is April 27th. It's our first one. Now that the weather's breaking, it should be, you know, a phenomenal day. For those of you that have been to Sunday Stroll, it is a packed event. Get here early, have fun, plenty of things to do. It's a family event. Come visit us for Sunday Stroll on April 27th. I want to mention that I went to the Bristol Borough Fire Association banquet on Saturday, myself, along with State Rep. Tina Davis, Congressman Fitzpatrick, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and Councilwoman Figaro was there, along with your council president. Our chief was there. And obviously, all the members of our emergency management and fire departments. It was the first time that all the companies came together and won a unified banquet. It was a great event. You know, the people that put it together put on a great event for all the companies. And it was, it was an appreciation event, as they mentioned it. It was, it was a fun event, appreciation event. And I was just glad to be a part of it and look forward to being there again next year. Lastly, I just want to thank all of the emergency management people that were involved in that Septic Incident, I mean, you know, Amtrak Incident. I was on the scene for over two hours with the chief and with all the other people in emergency management. What people don't understand is what it takes when something happens in this community. The way everyone comes together from the different areas, whether it's police, fire, fire police, other municipalities supporting us, you know, to come together to control the scene, control the cameras, control the people. It's amazing how they work in harmony. And I can't thank them enough, and I've said it a million times, I'm going to repeat myself, that people that can just get up from their kitchen table or get up from sitting on their couch with their family and at the drop of the dime show up to help someone else in this community, you will always have my utmost respect. So, you know, I want to thank all those agencies, all those municipalities, everyone that was involved in, in that, you know, horrific situation. You know, thank you for the time and effort you put in on that horrible evening. That's all I have.
Any questions? Chief, you have anything? Rain, you want to go first?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to commend our town on the way they backed up the Cramp family. Our place, where we are now is, it's one of the best places on earth. And I also want to tell you that, a little story about Bill Wallach. Bill Wallach lived on the corner on Inlet Street and I lived on Mansion as a child. And he was always such a nice man, but he was a giant, a gentle giant. So Steve and I were on our way to a state title game. And we had just bought a Ford Elite. It was our first new car. Well, our car breaks down on the turnpike. And we look over and somebody's backing up on the turnpike. It was Bill Wallach and Tommy. They said, what's the matter? Car died. Just then, a tow truck pulls up. We said, take this car. We got in their car, went to the game, enjoyed the game. And I'll never forget that. I thought that was so, like, wonderful. And that's Bristol, that's what we do, you know? Also, Buster Spadacino, what a great man. What he instilled in his children is unbelievable, really unbelievable. His two boys and his daughter, they're really following in his footsteps. And also Ginny O'Donnell, she's, she's my cousin. She has four boys who my kid, my daughter grew up with. And very, very sad. She struggled and she gave it her best, but she had, she succumbed to the illness. Sad. I have some things on here for Mr. Dillon and I'm going to send you pictures as well. Okay? There's leaves along the path. Bushes are overgrown. And it's in between Radcliffe and Farragut Avenue. There's, there's also behind Taft and the firehouse, a lot of leaves are back there. There's graffiti from Jefferson Avenue to Snyder Girardi, especially behind the Grundy Skating Rink on the light poles. Behind Seabird on Rackliff Street up to Lenox, graffiti on light poles. And graffiti on a trash can along the path between Farragut and Wilson Avenue. And also along the river where the Lenox is, I don't know if that's, this is our problem or their problem. The trees are overgrown and they're causing the light poles to be diminished. So I don't know if that's us or it's them.
50 times worse, I have to check it out.
Thank you. And that's all I have, but I will be sending you pictures. I have all pictures for everything, okay? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, we lost a lot of very good people over the last couple of weeks. Mr. Wallach was my former neighbor, very fond of Mr. Buster Spadacino and the work that he has done for this borough, especially at the onset of Little League. I'm sure it's very difficult for his family. So my sympathies. And Mrs. O'Donnell, you know, her son was a close friend of mine as we grew up with Tiffany as well. And, you know, a lot of fond memories of childhood there as well. So they will all be missed. And then, of course, you know, the Cramp family, we're all thinking about them. I didn't know them well. I knew Chris. I did not know the other two well, but of course, I know Harry very, very well. And Harry said to me on Saturday at the, at the service, how do I thank a community for supporting me, us? He didn't say me, he said, how do I thank a community for supporting us? And that's, that's Harry, right? It's a, I don't think we, I don't think he needs to thank us, right? That family has done so much for this town, for the people of this town. And we're all just thinking about them. And I think the outpouring is just a testament to how, how they were and how Harry is and the rest of the family is as well. So deepest sympathies there to many great Bristolians. On another note, on a more positive note, Recreation Borough Rec is continuing to progress. We've got a lot of exciting things that are, that are brewing that I'm sure this council will talk about in the near future. But the one that I wanted to address most specifically is the oncoming Flag Football Program. I know Little League has just started. We pushed that back by a week. Mr. D'Jesepe took the lead on that. But Flag Football is one of our more successful programs as well. We've had hundreds of kids participate in the last couple of years. It is, it's an expensive program, to be perfectly honest with you. But this Borough Council agrees every year to support that program financially so that it is at no cost to the kids of Bristol Borough, which is a very rare thing if you, you know, you look around in Flag Football or any sport for that matter. But Flag Football continues to grow in popularity. I think for a lot of kids, they found their niche with it. Kids who love football, but, you know, maybe some parents are concerned about the contact nature of it. Or kids who go on to play contact football who are just getting started with Flag. It's a great, it's a great way to start. So we're very happy with the way that program has progressed. We're also very happy with, with the leaders of it, Harold and Tyree, who do a phenomenal job of putting that together. And frankly, you know, we've had some spirited conversations about when it would happen. That was really the only kind of discuss and debate that we really had over it. And I would like to say to them and to anyone else that, you know, the best programs, the best leaders, I think, come where they, they might disagree on certain things. And then we come out in the end with a better product because everyone's opinions were hurt on that. So we've decided that the Flag Football Program will start, officially start on June 7th, but the Combine will tentatively be on May 10th. So the Combine, just so you understand, is just a way to get the lay of the land for the different skill levels of different players so that the teams can be divided relatively evenly. And it's actually a lot of fun to see all these little kids out there doing, you know, the things that the pro will do in the NFL Draft Combine. But that will be on May 10th. And then the program itself, the games themselves, will start on June 7th. And they will end on July 12th. There will be no July 4th weekend activities when it comes to Flag Football. And, you know, there's a lot of conversation about when this program should happen. This is where we settled on it for this year. There have been conversations about possibly some fall action with Flag Football as well. There have been conversations about possibly some fall action with Flag Football as well. You know, we've got soccer programs going during that time, so we're looking at that maybe in the future. But for this year, it will start on June 7th, the games that is, and the Combine will be on May 10th. So it is coming up pretty quickly, less than a month. So the registration is out actually tonight for Flag Football. I would encourage you all to surf Facebook for it. I've been assured that it will be posted tonight, if not tonight, then the next day. So keep an eye out for it, and then I'll ask, of course, Mr. Dillon and Matt and the Borough website and everyone else to promote it on the website, promote it on our channel, to make sure that we're, this program is continuing to grow. I would highly recommend it in the Saturday from June 7th to July 12th, if you're around and just kind of bored and want to see what's going on. It's really a great energy down at that field for Flag Football, and the kids had a blast. So really happy with where Rec is going and continues to go.
Thanks for the update. Ryan?
I have anything. Maria? Yeah, I have a few things. First, I have a question for Mr. Dillon, the Mayor and Chief. Do we have a, any information for, like, a suicide hat line, a woman's place? Do we have anything on our Borough page?
On our website?
Yes.
I honestly haven't looked, so we gotta get back to that.
Okay, 'cause if we don't, is it a possibility of putting information on there so that, you know, people can get help? Find help?
Yes, we have stuff downstairs, in the lobby, all that stuff, pamphlets and flyers and phone numbers and email addresses for people to reach out to.
Okay.
If they have an issue.
Yeah, yeah. I think it would be nice if you could have it on our, the Borough website.
I'll get it to Glenn Moore.
Okay.
Or Matt.
Sorry, wasn't there a program that was, where they hired two, two employees?
Responder. Yeah, we do have that. Actually, she's been such a big help the last week and a half since this event, not only with the police, but in the community, with the schools. The Mayor and I met in the school the day after, early that morning. She went in at nine o'clock at Anna Vazado and some others and helped out. She and I met at the other schools in town, with some of the teachers and the students.
Yeah, I mean, the co-responders were on the scene the night of the incident.
Yes.
And then the next morning, the Chief and I were in the school no later than 7:30 to meet with the staff to have a briefing prior to school opening about the children in the school, where they could get help, or who they could talk to if anything was needed. So we made sure that that was taken care of prior to the first bell ever ringing. So we have tons of resources, and we've made everyone aware of where they can track someone down, or who they need to contact, and the Chief has also made himself very available to everyone, including myself. So we definitely have gotten it out to the public, but there, there's another avenue you think it needs to be presented to. We have no problem putting it out there.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I just think it, it would be nice to have it on our website. And I also want to talk about the upcoming cleanup. The townwide cleanup day is April 26th, with a rain date on the 27th, from 10 to 2. We will meet at the Snyder Girardi School at 9:45. We will provide you with bags, gloves, and vests. We will also have water, coffee, donuts, and fetels. So last year, it was a great success, and I'm hoping to see, you know, the same for this year. It was a very teamwork effort, and it could only be done working as a team. So as last year, I am asking all hands on deck, please come out, help, even if it's just you helping your neighbor doing your, you know, the front of your house. And also, send me pictures of the area that you're cleaning, and you can send those pictures to by email address, the Borough's email, which is mfigueroa@bristleborough.com. So, and that's basically it. I look forward to seeing everyone there on the 26th, and I can actually say happily, I will be able to actually participate in it this year, which I'm really psyched about, so, and that's it.
Thank you. Louis?
Yes, I, during the month, I met with the Blighted Property Committee with Sally and, and John Miller and Jeff Dorwell from the Redevelopment Authority, and we have a property that is in the process of being addressed as a blighted property. And it's going to plan and commission, and we'll get to approve it after the planning commission reads, reviews it. And the CAC Committee with Dow Chemical and the other chemicals, I serve on there with the Chief, and we're trying to tie the Nixal program in with the chemical companies in case there's something, 'cause Burlington also uses Nixal, so we're, we're working on that. And I just want to mention that a student from Bristol High School, Maya Reagan, gave a presentation the other night, and she was, she was fantastic. It was really good to see, she's a senior, she's going to work with them as an intern this summer, but I was really proud to see her represent the Bristol, Bristol students. We met with the Zoning Ordinance Committee for Changing. Greg and I met with Lynn Bush, and we're addressing some of the problems that we have in our zoning book, and hopefully we can get them taken care of. On April 22nd at 2:00 PM, Bucks County Rescue Squad is going to dedicate their new, new ambulance, and we're doing it in honor of Dolores D. Brown, who was very active with the Silver Lake Nature Center and the Lower Bucks Hospital Board. And she's going to attend, and we're going to honor her and the RDA and Parks Casino for their, their help in supporting this rescue squad. And at the cleanup, the Rotary Club will join in with, with us for the cleanup, and also the Interact Club, which is the Rotary Division in the high school, they're gonna come and participate in the cleanup, so it's, we're getting some momentum there.
Yes.
So that's it for me.
Thank you, Louis. Betty?
Yeah, I, I don't want to interrupt Maria, but I, I think most of you know I work for Tina Davis part-time. But I had the pleasure, I knew Chris, he was one, one of my constituents back in the day when he lived in Otter Street, and I saw the work he was doing. He would come to our office. We helped a lot of homeless people, we helped a lot of mental health people, and we have a resource package there. So I'm gonna bring some to the Borough, and if you need to call me there, it's 267-580-2660. We're located at 3611 Green Lane. The resource package has a lot of stuff for mental health, for homelessness, for food, because a lot of people aren't getting what they need, and it's a really good resource package. So I'm going to, when I go back to work this week, I had planned to bring some in, and I'm gonna leave them downstairs and upstairs so people can get them if they need them. But if you call there, you can come in, there's anything we could do for you, if there's any kind of way you're hurting, please don't hesitate to call us, to come in. It doesn't have to be me, it could be the other ladies that I worked with. And Chris did a lot, he did a lot. You know, there was times we called him, and we've had people that were completely homeless and had nowhere to go, and he'd come in and take over, and that was before he went to work for the county. He also worked for Pendel Mental Health for the longest time. So, I mean, these services are needed throughout town, and I think a lot of people know that, but I just figured with Maria bringing it up, I'd like to bring in the resource packages and see if that'll help some people too. We did go to the Firehouse banquet, it was a beautiful banquet, it was really nice. It was nice to hear the Mayor and the firemen discuss that we're going to eventually house all the fire companies together on the one roof, and that's our goal, and that's been our goal since the Mayor, you know, became the Mayor, and we want to keep going that way because that's one thing we're gonna do. Another thing is, I want to give my condolences to the White family, Ray White and Vernon White. Their mother, Josephine Hutton, who lived on Buckley Street forever, passed away on April 2nd. She was 99 years old. So God bless Ms. Hutton, may she rest in peace. Just wanted to bring that up also. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
I have two quick things. One, the Little League Opening Day has been moved to April 19th at 10:00 AM, so whoever can make it, if you would like to be there, it's a good event. It's not gonna be the same without Buster, but we'll get through it. The other thing is the dedication that Louis spoke about with the RDA and the Rescue Squad, and if anybody members from council or the mayor would like to attend, feel free to come to the Rescue Squad for that dedication. And just one more quick thing, I just want to say to AJ, you did a solid job for your first major event, and this council has a lot of faith in you, and we did the right thing by hiring you and moving you into the right position. I was very proud to see what you did that day, so.
Thank you, AJ.
You, you did a great job.
Thank you.
It wasn't a normal situation, and you handled it with class and dignity.
Thank you.
So before we go into our voting, as part of this meeting, does anybody else in the public have anything they want to discuss? At ends public. Jimmy, you have anything?
I just want to touch base, if I may, real quickly on the council's agenda, item five, six, and seven. This deals with grant money that the Borough has been given from the Redevelopment Authority, and the word acquisition should be payment, and in motion five, and on item six, the motion should read payment instead of acquisition also. But these are three major improvements that the Borough is able to proceed with because of Redevelopment Authority funding. We also received a grant from the state about a week ago for additional lighting, the, for the decorative lighting, it was over 203,000, I believe, and we also have another grant that's still out there for additional lighting. So the idea is to eventually replace all of the decorative lighting in town, just the heads of it. And the new heads that we're talking about is, if you look, when you go out tonight, it's the one at the front of the firehouse, it's the far, far one, it has white on the top. What we found is, with our old ones with the black, when the temperature gets to be 90, 95, it really heats up and it starts to impact on the, the lighting itself. So with the white at the top, that should be less of a, you know, impact on the lighting. I mean, we should get, you know, many more years out of this new lighting, so.
And they're all LED lights.
Yes.
So the lens, when it discolors, it's from the heat. So what they're telling us is if you put a white top, it'll reflect the sun, the lens should stay good, and the LED light will help a lot by heating up the lamp. All right? Okay.
Before you adjourn, can I just say real quick, sorry? The Flag Football registration will be on Bristol Borough Rec page for Facebook.
Okay. Is it? Jeff, do you have anything?
After we conclude the agenda.
Okay. So, item two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for March 3rd of 2025, to accept the Treasurer's Report for January and February of 2025, to accept the Fire Chief's Report for February and March of 2025, to accept the Inspection Report for February and March of 2025, to accept the Police Report for February and March of 2025, to accept the Public Works Report for February and March of 2025, to accept Emergency Management Report for March of 2025, to accept the Hard Report for March 31st, 2025, and to accept the Gilmore Report dated April 2025 for March 2025 work.
Second by Mr. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the request for zoning solicitor Barbara M. Kirk, Hill Wallach LLP, hourly rate increase from $150 to $200.
Second, second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? She hasn't had a raise, I think, in seven years, is it? Or seven years, and she just, they have to, she said she either has to increase her wage or they have to, we have to look for another firm, and she does a good job, so I don't see a problem with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the 2024 With Them Audit Engagement Letter dated March 3rd, 2025, from Carl Hogan.
Second by Mr. Catruchie, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve, an approval of G&amp;G Electrical Construction LLC, Co-Stars proposal dated 12/10/24 in amount of 181,436 to replace poles and lights in the Mill Street parking lot acquisition will be from the Bucks County Redevelopment Grant.
Second, second by Mr. Pezz, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of G&amp;G Electrical Construction LLC, Co-Stars, proposal dated 12/10/24 in amount of 216,478 to install 10 pedestal enclosures and panels on Mill Street, which will include underground wiring and all light basis acquisition will be from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Grant.
Second by Mr. Pezz, questions or comments? The only comment I wanted to make, I don't know if you remember when I had that box here? If people, people were touching the pole, you can get, so that's all going to get straightened out.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the purchase of 38 decorative lights in the amount of 102,86, $102,086 from a Co-Stars company. Payment will be from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Grant.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez.
I'm not finished yet, sorry. Payment will be from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Grant, 28 lights at Riverfront Park, five at Borough Hall, and five at the Lagoon.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to, for the approval of resolution approving the condenation?
Condemn.
Condemnation of a certain tract of land with improvement thereon identified as tax parcel number 04-013-117-001, owned by Bristol Historic Preservation, Inc., consisting of 0.956 acres located in Bristol Borough, Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Second by Mr. Catruchie, questions or comments? I'd like to solicit to explain why it's, we're handling it this way.
If I may, this is the old train station.
If I may, this is the old train station and we are attempting by doing this to save the taxpayers a transfer tax of about $5,000. There's no, the structure's not being condemned, is not fit for the purpose intended, nor is the Borough doing this without the full cooperation of historic preservation. In fact, we are recording next Thursday, I believe, a facade preservation easement and the Borough will be acquiring the property also next Thursday. So this is not by any means a condemnation of the building itself. It's an acquisition resolution. No declaration of taking will be accomplished, but it will obviate the need for a transfer tax.
Plain and simple, so everybody at home understands. We're not ripping it down. We're not going, it's staying the way it is. We're saving taxpayers around $5,000 by this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nine.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion for approval of ordinance amending the provisions of, excuse me, chapter 15, motor vehicles and traffic section 15-304, truck, traffic restricted on certain streets.
Second by Mr. Catruchie, questions or comments? So this restriction that we're passing tonight is a very serious ordinance. It's going to go out to, to how they, GPS. We'll get this when we're done and hopefully trucks are going to start getting detoured off of these streets because it won't come up anymore as a truck route. Am I right, Kirk? That's where we're trying to accomplish here. So like the mayor said, we're doing everything we can. They're moving barriers and all. There's another truck today the chief responded to on Mansion Street?
Yes.
This morning that they've just moved things out of the way, so we're getting the handle. They're getting tired of paying serious fines. We're towing, right, Joe?
Correct.
All right. Do I have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the hiring of a new part-time police officer, Ryan DeFrank. Graduated Temple Police Academy in 2022 and has three years of police experience in Lower Bucks County.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion? No, I'm sorry.
No, don't worry. I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just go ahead and make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Borough to appeal the decision of the zoning hearing board on April 2nd on the property at parcel number 413165.
My second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? We're on a time string, so.
We have time. As long as you do it by, we'll do it next week. It'll be time enough.
Okay, so the solicitor's going to file a motion to appeal that decision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Louie wants to abstain from voting statewide?
Pardon?
You need the statewide or no?
No.
Okay.
We have one more, item two. There was a discussion. Okay, maybe.
I have it.
You have it?
Yes. I have a motion to authorize, Mr. President, I have a motion to authorize the manager and the solicitor to negotiate the purchase of 931 Garden Street.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Peter Rohn, questions or comments? This is a little tract of land, maybe 12 feet wide or whatever in an alley that we feel that if we could acquire this piece of ground, if we could work out a deal, we could create some more parking in that area for residents. I think it's a good move for the Borough and the people that live there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mrs. Figueroa. Meeting adjourned.